We were going to do right away a review of a USDA loan resolution, but we are waiting for Kate Nesman and we weren't sure when Jody was going to be here. So that will probably, no, no worries. That will probably happen at seven. So we'll just carry on until such time. So we'll do the approval of minutes and then we'll check in with our community members. So there are three sets of minutes. I did read the April 10th and I made changes of CHAS to Chad. And I just added that the block council wanted Jody and I to be available for both purchases and any, any, any documents associated with the block once. That was the only changes that I made to that. So is the board okay with both the regular meetings, the special board meeting when we did the fire contract? And?
I didn't read the public information session, but if you will, then it looks okay like that.
It's pretty, it's pretty simple because it's not even a public hearing. It was just a public information session. So are we, are we, are you okay then?
Yeah, by consensus.
Okay, by consensus, those are all done. Alright, so now we're open for community input? Anybody? Okay, alright.
Hi, I'm here as the head of the Rollsterr College Library. And at our last meeting, we had voted to add another alternate to our board. And we are able to have up to three at this point.
I'm sorry, you are able to have up to?
Up to three. At this point, we only have one and we decided to add a second one just in case. After reviewing everyone that would be available to do something like that, we decided to recommend Liz Markop to the position. Liz has been a trustee in the past. She was one of the founders of the library and has exhibited an excellent commitment to the library over the years since it's been founded. So we'd like her to be named as the board sub-chose.
Thank you. Board comments, questions, motions?
What was the vote? Was it unanimous?
Yes, it was.
So the only reason I ask, because Liz had been on previously and had to resign because she couldn't make the, because she just, she had time to.
Okay. Turn the motion to?
Sure, will they accept it? The recommendation.
Okay, the recommendation from the library trustees. I think I heard a second.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And then congratulations to Liz and thank her for her willingness to serve. Any other community questions or comments? Caroline, are you here for welfare?
Yeah.
Okay. Tom, are you here to talk to us about something?
Yes.
Please come up.
Thank you. I just wanted to fill you in on the inspection that Jeff and I did of Matt Randall's.
Oh, this is the, was it, did you go too?
No.
No, you went yourself.
We sent them.
Okay, Clement Road, yes. Thank you.
Okay, we met with Matt. We heard his issues, which are valid. I mean, the culvert, which is only like six or an eight inch structural iron pipe, clearly has been there for decades. Matt seemed to recall it was cleared out like a couple of years ago, but the guy that did it, Jeff was telling me, didn't work there for like the last eight or nine years. So it's been a while and it's very clear that it's accumulated, you know, dirt, leaves, runoff, et cetera, for many years. And it looks like, and Jeff can explain, if we, the town, wants to clean it out, I guess it's a fairly easy process.
Yeah, just a back-to-drug.
From one side? Can we do it from just one side?
Yeah, what it is, is they, they put a hose, a high-pressure hose with a hat on it. They spray water and they clean it out that way.
So we could do it from the side we have access?
But the water's still not going to run freely, right? It's plugged up on the other end.
Well, see, that's the thing. It will. There is the, the culvert, so to speak. It slopes, you know, from Randall's to across the street, but it's a minimal pitch and it's going to be at least, what, like eight inches below grade. So it will work for a little while. It will, I think, affect the ponding just off the side of the road. But the pictures that he showed are further back in his house.
Right.
I don't think it's going to have any effect on that. And like Jeff pointed out while we were out there, just the natural lay of the land is his, is a low spot. And I don't think doing the cleaning of the culvert out, I mean, it might help for a little while, but I don't really think it's going to alleviate his main concerns.
There's a little bit, from the road, I didn't go into the yard, but from the road, it looks like there's a little bit of a, a little berm or something before you even get to the ditch line, right?
No.
On the side or is it on the other side?
Which side?
So the flooding, the pooling of water was happening in the back of his property?
Of Randall's property.
Right, of Randall's property. And even if it were pitched the other way, there's, it looks like there's a berm of some kind on his side of the property, Randall's side of the property, before we even get into the ditch line. Is that?
There is a high spot.
From the car level, that's what it looks like. I don't know what it looks like.
There is a bit of a high spot, but with the culvert, you know, so far below grade, I mean, you're right, it's basically ineffectual.
So I was going to say, it's not going to affect the pooling of water in his backyard, which is what he was complaining about, right?
No.
So, yes. Did you explain to Mr. Randall that that pooling is not, not from that? It's, the septic design is so hot, well, it's supposed to be high, but when they did the septic, they should have ran that water line behind it.
His, his leach field, the first septic design was actually at the level where the water was pooling. When they redesigned the septic system, they put a raised bed in.
Right.
Which is probably five feet taller than the actual land itself.
So instead of diverting the water behind the septic. So my second question is, first, it's not a right, it's not a correct culvert. It's not a culvert. And two, we don't have easement for the water to drain to the next property.
Not that I'm aware of. I was going to look at the deed for that property, but.
Across the street?
Yeah.
I think it's pretty clear that we have no.
Oh, well.
You know, the town is not aware that we have any kind of prescriptive easement or anything of that nature. So is it worth, is it worth any even just PR or goodwill to try to blow that out? And if so, what would that cost?
Probably two or three hundred bucks to have a back-to-drug coming in. If I schedule that when we do catch basins cleaning, it might do it, you know, for.
What is it worth to think about that?
You're blowing out an illegal culvert into some place we have no easement.
Well, the culvert's not illegal. I mean, it's our culvert. I mean, it's there, right?
But it's not a culvert, it's a pipe.
Okay, but it's in our right, it is.
Okay, we still don't have an easement.
Well, we're not going to touch the, the water across the.
Well, like Jeff said, it is, it's, the water is pushed in with some force, so there's going to be.
Oh, I see, I see.
Discharge.
So it does have an impact?
Right, on the other side of the street where the, the end of the culvert has been buried.
Yeah.
Filled in. Is there a ditch line? I don't remember. Is there any kind of ditch line on that side? There isn't, right?
If you look at the, the line of the road, at the edge of the road, in front of this resident's house, you can actually see where, where they filled it in, where it actually kicks out, and then you see the, the line of the road again.
So we're kind of, I think we're kind of back then to just thinking that when we get to Clement Road from a road, from a road plan, would we, we could address it at that time?
I think that, as you point out, would be good from a PR perspective. And maybe, excuse me, also illustrate to Mr. Randall that the main ponding that he's concerned about isn't going to be affected, no matter how things, but on the other side.
Yeah, even if we got easements, a 16-inch pipe and.
The water isn't making it to the ditch line?
Yep, it's, yeah, it's not. He would have to have somebody with redirect that water past the septic design behind it. And then, and that's not us.
That's entirely.
That is his property.
Right.
That's just like my neighbor running her water off of her lawn and down.
I guess the next step is to have the, send a letter to the Randall's company and have a conversation.
Well, I was just going to say, Tom, could you draft something that, that.
Sure.
Has your observations?
Yep.
And we could say when we're planning on doing the, the road. And I don't, you know, I don't know if there's anything we can do at that time, but that's a time that we can at least look at it.
Well, you would take, I mean, you'd take out that pipe, that's kind of a culvert or not really, and, and redo the ditch line on that side, on the right side of, the left-hand side, depending on which way you're going. For the road correctly, what I mean.
Yeah, as we're finding with Clement Road, we're probably going to have to put in the swells and all sets off.
Yeah, we might, yeah.
Especially with the new development coming in and that side already being taken out with the rock and so forth.
Is Clement Road work scheduled for this year?
Oh, God.
No.
I'm bringing it up.
Sorry.
No, none of us will be here by then.
We can say anything yet.
Well, 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 no. I'd like to, I'd like to think that the board, however constituted, would have some allegiance to, you know, a strategic planning effort that we have started. But, you know, we can't, we can't bind any future board, just like we refuse to be bound by any, any prior one.
Yeah, they're literally 10 years out.
Oh, where are we? Sidewalks, Locust Pine, Clement?
What year?
2023.
Maybe before me.
So if I put that date in the letter.
It is, it's probably.
But this is also subject to change, too.
Subject to change.
Yeah.
So we could just say, perhaps rather than stating the year, which is public anyway, because it's on the plan and here we're all talking about, we just say that when we redo Clement Road, we will be looking at the overall drainage, particularly on that side of the road.
Okay, but they have to know that that pond is not formed from drainage. It's formed from their septic design being so high.
After Jeff and I talked with him, he kind of reluctantly admitted that.
Okay, okay. I don't want him to think that we're coming in with a backhoe and draining that for a moment.
No, 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 no. We made that pretty clear. That's.
We have wonderful excavators in town that would be happy to give it a bit, I'm sure, but.
Okay. Thank you for going, both. We appreciate it. Good for that letter. Anything else on?
No.
Okay, anything else, Tom, that you need to talk to?
I'm sorry, one more thing. Three Highland, they had put in a building permit, put in an office in their barn and, over a year.
Just went through a site, did you remember that?
So we approved that, that was, we signed that for you. But I don't think it was ever completed, but they do have new wood above, at the barn, at the barn roof line. But I don't know if they've ever completed the, I don't know if they ever came in for an extension or anything.
I don't know. They're going to put in a small home office and stuff.
So what is the concern? That they don't have a valid permit at the moment?
I don't, I don't know if it was ever finished, and if it was finished, he would be inspecting it at this point now, right?
I would think so, sure. I'll call them. That's Martin, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll give my butt.
I just found them the other day, so.
Okay. And I couldn't help but notice Main Street, the house on Main Street's doing something. I assume that we have building permits for that.
Which house?
I don't know. I drove by and it, they had a contractor sign out, you know?
Two houses like that.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know. I mean, I went by and I was gone before I noticed, so.
We'll try settlement, so, is that it?
Oh, yeah.
These are greens.
Yes, yeah.
Landscaping, I think it is.
Oh, it's landscaping. Oh, oh, okay.
But I think the sign that I remember clearly is like stone walls, landscaping, or something else. So I don't know if they're having, no, I don't know. Now that you've said it now, I think I saw.
Yeah, they're just reseeding their lawn or putting in some shrubs. Okay, I guess, I guess we're good. Alright, yes, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Okay, I'll go to highway. Do you have stuff for us to have?
I just have a purchase order for street sweeping this year.
Okay.
Your desk, everything. Your purchase order 951 to Show &amp; Roadway Services for the streets we've been in town this year. The purchase order's up to $2,500 and his rate of sweeping is $95 an hour. And the other company, he may have $115 an hour.
Thank you. So let's talk about stormwater for a minute.
Yep.
So street sweeping is an important consideration if you're promoting stormwater management and if you're working on your MS4 permit for.
I'd have, his is through the email mike, because yeah, I printed it off. I didn't have time to print it off.
This was the other.
So, so street sweeping is one of the things that, you know, we should be doing with regard to our permit and it's, will be in our notice of intent and it's in the prior permit. But with regards to documentation, it's possible that at some point we might need to better document. Like, how do we know what, how much he's swept up? Is there any way to figure that out?
I can keep track of his loads.
Why don't you try?
Back when we were doing sand, back when we were using sand, we were probably probably 18, 20 yards of material. And now that we switched over to saw, we're probably six to 12.
So that's, that's an interesting piece of data. So it would be helpful to us to report that on our permit. So if you could take note again this year?
Yeah.
That would be, you know, just write it down, send an email. That would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, yep.
Sound point, sorry. My purchase order number 09, sorry, I forgot the number. 0951, is that correct?
Yes.
To Show &amp; Roadway Services for up to $2,500 for street sweeping.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Had to make sure you're reading it correctly.
Thank you. But it involves, I'm going to miss the, the number of this.
It's a permit.
So let's see, we have a few things on the list. One is prospect, you know, Mr. Brunell has come in a couple of times and we haven't resolved this yet. So what I'm hoping is that you and perhaps a board member can go out and inspect it together and maybe measure from the center of the road to wherever his brick things are.
I went by the other day, actually. So it's, yeah, I'm happy to work with you again. I tell you, the brick pillars are right up against the, the road and the telephone poles that are, utility poles, rather, that are further back than the.
So if we can get a measurement and if there's an argument that says his brick pillars are within the right of way, then if we can do that, if not.
Yeah, we, we never hit his brick pillars real well.
He did say, I have to, he didn't do it as part of a meeting. He did it before a meeting. He came to me again like two weeks ago and he said, he had talked to a police officer and the police officer said, oh yeah, that looks like the plow hit it. So I'm not.
I'd like to read the police department's report on that, because there's going to be a report now. I'd like to see that report.
So you can.
Absolutely. I'm going to be talking with Bob tomorrow.
Okay. So if you, if we could get a measurement, that would be helpful. Alright, thank you. Next on the list is smoke test notifications. So this has to do with Foundry South Street. When we're putting the underdrain and we know that there's an open pipe. Is it how many feet down?
It's probably six feet down.
Six feet down. And so what we want to do is, is get some help from Dover. They've offered to help. So we're hoping that they'll be able to, to put some kind of a smoke bomb so that at the other end, whatever house this is coming from, they will, they will be able to tell. And the, what the town would like to do, it's in our right of way, is to close this. But we want to make sure that homes, any home that has this, has appropriate notice. And we want them to have appropriate notice before we even start this test. So, so I will ask you and Caroline to, to make sure that, you know, we send letters out to the folks that are, we think are there, or put something on the website.
We'll send letters out, put stuff on the website.
Maybe even a sandwich board that's on the corner so that they can call in if they want some information. We need to give them a few days' notice or just say it's happening between here and here, whatever. Or do you, are you, are you good with that? Okay. Alright, thank you. Do we otherwise have any, also, we're going to need a schedule for the roadworks so that we can just, in general, let the town know about that.
They were planning on starting this week, Wednesday, but we have weather coming in, so we'll postpone till next week. Providing all the bonds and permits and big saves done, we're planning on the following week starting.
Can you put something on the website? See, you shouldn't come to these meetings because it's too easy for me to.
What was, what's their estimated date for next week, Jeff, Dan?
Probably start on a Monday.
Until next Monday, they're okay?
Depending if I'm in, like I said, all the bond paperwork's in, big save's done, all their stuff. I mean, there's a series, and the weather, I mean, if it's going to have a week of rain, when I'm going to start drainage.
Do you know where, where they're starting, what location?
They're going to start laying under drainage.
They're going to start Foundry then?
Right, yeah, we're going to start on Foundry Street. So pretty much, they're going to lay all the drainage, the four-inch drainage. They're going to lower all our structures, plate them, and then they're going to start reclaiming and then they'll start shaping the road. And then they'll come back in, shape our swales, pave it, and then come back and hand-pave our swales. And then they're going to open light.
Okay, so let's talk about the, the non-coacher driveway that is on town, known to be now on town, town property because of the survey we did. And you want to tell us the issue that you see with that, that driveway? Call it a driveway, I don't know what else to call it.
Yeah, swales usually are not made to drive through on a, on a constant basis. So therefore, what's happened now is you actually see oil runs in the swale and it's broke in this wall where it's traveled in and out every time. So I'd like to put a stop to the parking in this parking spot that somebody has just created for themselves. And it's, it's actually town property.
But they're doing damage, yeah.
So we could put up a sign that just says, "No parking, town property."
We told that resident we would get back to them.
Right.
We did. He never came to see us.
We told them we would get back to them.
We did get back to them. We sent him a letter. Yeah, we sent him a letter.
I just sent him a letter inviting him in.
Were you inviting him in?
He, he came in.
No, he came in before.
Before.
Came in before.
Yeah.
Can you, can you find, I'm quite sure we sent him a letter and said.
We were expecting him to come in.
I will feel that you are correct with this quote, but I just don't want to create.
Right, we did send, I'm quite sure we sent him the results of that, understood.
My second, my other thing was the swell right there. Can they, will they be able to make that bigger so, and more.
What swell are you talking about?
Right, it's actually right there, right before the garden club.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to, where that, where that structure is now, we're actually going to make a nice bowl and have it all paved. And then, and then put wood on the backside to stabilize that, that bowl so when the water comes down.
But that bowl will be nice and wide.
Yeah, it'll be bigger than what it is.
Because that's a pretty steep hill.
Yeah. But the swell will be consistent, probably four feet wide or three feet or whatever it is now. We're going to match whatever's there now, except it'll not be all broken and.
Well, it just doesn't have the back wall right now. It's all dirt.
That too, where it's located.
Awesome. Thank you, Jack.
If you can't find that, we'll just draft another one.
I'm sure I can find it.
Okay, alright. So assuming that we did in fact notify him and invite him to come back to us, I mean, what does the board think about just the note, you know? We don't want the garden club to use it either. I mean, we just don't want people driving onto that, into that spot over that spail. Is that correct?
That's, that's it.
Yeah. So what I'm going to, you know, my other capacity as on the garden club board will tell them about this. And so the garden club will probably come to the board and say how they might want to, you know, try to get more parking in that front area off, off the road.
Right. How are we going to control the parking that happens in front of the houses on both sides? They need to replace the park.
Their same way that it's controlled. I mean, they, they.
Because they're going to ruin the swell too.
It's not so much if you drive in the swell.
Right.
You know, I can drive in the swell. It's when you drive over it. You don't have the, A, the thickness, and B, usually it's, you know, you, the rollers use a vibrator to get extra compression when they're, they're doing, you know, road. When you're doing a swell, you're not doing that because the way it's based design. And usually on the backside of a swell, you have load, where as in a road, you have gravel. So it's just, but if you pull in the swell, you should be sufficient. It's that bump when you go through it, you know, you're always pushing against that wall is usually where they break.
It's expensive, right, it's silent. I mean, you can have that conversation. Make sure we've got the conversation with the rest, you know, we can discuss with the garden club people before we post that.
Well, I mean, that, that, that's fine, but I mean, you know, there are like 20 gardeners, so you want to remind them not to park, not to park there. So they currently park.
I think I have a no parking sign at the shop, I'm just thinking.
They, they currently have two or three, you know, they can park two or three people inside the garden club. And we're, and the garden club is looking to see whether they can, you know, come to the board and ask to like enlarge that a little bit, you know, do some more clearing. So Jeff, how is it, would you be able to do some, you know, make that entry from the road into that area better?
So part of the contract is every driveway gets a three-foot acre. And then we'll back, anything that's gravel, we'll be back with gravel. And if it's hot dog, there'll be a joint round and there'll be a match.
So that won't be a swell. That will be a driveway like every other.
It'll be a driveway. They'll go in through the width it is now, three feet. Then it'll be gravel.
Yeah.
But it'll be asphalt, three feet in.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
And all the intersections will be 30.
Alright, so we'll look for that letter. We won't put the no parking sign up just yet. And we'll wait to see, I guess we'll continue this next week then. Kelwin, we got a, an email from the Fieldsons on the road condition, Kelwin. He sent pictures. It's hard to tell for me.
So when you go in Kelwin, is that dead end part where it's supposed to be seed lane? What happened is, it looks like, you know, the city of Summers were plows that for us. And they went in, plowed this last storm, and when they picked their gear up, they sank through the asphalt because there's a really soft spot right there. The area that's broken is not interfering in any way, shape, or form with anybody's driveway. It's actually at the very end of the road where they usually stop by all the stone.
Does it look awful? Is that?
It's broken asphalt.
I think we told them we'd pick it up or something.
We picked it up last year where a couple pieces flaked off. But this last storm we had this year, where the ground was so soft, their truck actually, I think they actually got stuck there. Their trucks sunk and.
So can we pick up?
We can pick the broken pieces up.
Alright, if you can pick the broken pieces up, I will let them know that they're at least getting broken pieces up. Thank you. Alright, so here's, we're going to, we're going to finish Jeff's section. Then we're going to stop for a little bit to consider a resolution that our town clerk is here to help assign and then we'll go to the fire department. Okay? Alright, so that was Kelwin. We have Pine Street, the rocks. We got an email from the Whittons about.
So on Pine Street in the area of 18, there's a hill that comes down. The water washes the shoulder out all the time. I've tried three-quarter inch gravel, two-inch gravel. And just the way the road's sloped and pitched, everything goes to that side of the road, which deteriorates start of the road. So we put a small amount of two-inch, I call it erosion stone. Which therefore, we haven't had any trouble since. But when you plowed this last storm where everything was soft, it may have bumped a little bit and moved the rocks and so on and so forth.
Are they, is there a way to determine whether any of these rocks could be pushed onto their property as opposed to their property without a town right of way as opposed to our right of way?
So Paul Antenna got back to me today and that road varies from 50 foot to a 40 foot right of way throughout the certain parts of the road. He wasn't sure what part was what, because the person that actually does that was not in today. But the records show that the road does vary 40 to 50 foot all the way up to, from Foundry to Main. I guess it's wrong, Silver Street, where it comes up.
Sorry, worst case scenario, measured at 40. I said, well, I drove by, it looked like it was in the.
I drove by it too.
It's more the ditch line. What they may consider their lawn, so, but I didn't have a measuring, so.
Well, could you, could, can you measure 40 feet and maybe put a flag and then take another picture?
Sure, if they let me, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's the right of, you know, if the right of way is at least 40 feet, then. I mean, does the board have any other thoughts on this?
No, we haven't been doing one once again.
Yeah, exactly.
I, we were just, me and my neighbors were just out moving the rocks back to the swell area.
Do you want to just write a letter saying we?
We're not, we're not responsible?
Well, I don't, I don't know that we're not responsible, so I, that's why, see, I don't want to say that because I'm not sure. We can just say that, we can ask them or just say that the town feels that, you know, we don't have the resources to manage this. But I, I don't know that we're not responsible. If somebody can tell me that, we'll overshadow the doubt. But I, I don't know that we're not responsible. If somebody can tell me that, to overshadow the doubt, I'd be happy to say that.
So we'll measure, we can measure that at the same time we measure our river.
Sure.
Okay. That sounds good, thank you. Volvo Backhoe, is there anything new to say?
Nothing.
Uh, cleaning at the highway department, uh, I'd like to table this until maybe later in the year, so we can figure out if there's any, what our money situation is.
What, the old highway department?
No, this is a request that we had from you to provide janitorial services.
There are nothing about.
Did that come from you?
Oh, the, the bathroom, yeah. Sure.
Uh, recycling equipment proposals, I think we, we're gonna at least look at that later on in the meeting, so just gonna let you know, we won't do it just yet, but. Anything else for Jeff?
Yeah, there's a couple of things in my folder. Nick still hasn't sent us a snow pile.
No, we reached out to him several times and they have not gotten back to me, I don't know if they've gotten back to Carolyn.
Well, that's nice of them.
For our cash flow.
Yes, thank you, Nick. And two purchase orders for.
That's stormwater, and I'm happy to speak to that when we get to that, that whole.
Thank you, but there was no who it went to.
Ah, you're right.
So I'm not sure if those Jeffs are not, I'll leave it in my folder.
Yeah, okay, I'll, yeah, good, good point. Super, we can talk about that later. Alright, so I think we're good with Jeff? Hi!
Thank you.
Why did you come in?
I, just a few minutes ago, I just popped in to get that Shoreland permit by notification signed. I can, I'll wait till there's a brief.
This, are we through with Jeff? Okay, thank you, Jeff. So we'll do the resolution in just a minute, this, this is really, really quick.
Perfect.
I don't understand, I have set, what did I do, did I keep saying the wrong one?
It might be the, um, the wetlands permit by notification, so that's the cover letter for the, the actual document. The rest of this is just a backup that Dev gave me, so you know what you're signing, but.
So this is a short, could you just explain to the?
Sure.
Just brief you to the board, so that.
So, there's two, two applications that are necessary for the lower mill outfall project. One of them is the actual wetlands application, and that is, they're both permit by notifications, meaning they're less involved process. You just file a form, and by filing it, you're basically getting the permit. What I think was signed before was the wetlands permit, this is the Shoreland permit by notification, meaning.
I thought that that's the one, I, I believe it.
I told Dev, I said, you know what, I'll swing by on my way home, no problem, I'll have to sign.
Beautiful. It looks like the one I did too, but whatever.
They all look the same.
Alright, so board, I'm gonna sign the Shoreland.
Permit by notification.
Permit by notification.
For the lower mill.
For the lower mill. Okay. As long as you're here, we could say that, um, Aaron reached out to the North Country, who were concerned about our work schedule and other things.
Yes.
And so, it looks like, you know, we're gonna be able to manage their concerns and our, our construction concerns.
Yeah, the, the big concern is that there are teaching room hours, or days on Thursday from Sunday, so we're gonna do what began to either not work at all on those days, or limit work during those days to areas that don't block their, their outdoor area and their loading dock, which I think is very doable, so.
So thank you, thank you for that.
Yeah, there's other things that I summarized, a little stuff that would obviously take care of during construction.
I hope you were able to provide some business to that as well.
A little, a little bit, yes. I wanted some good recommendations from, from you on what to try.
Fire starter.
Yeah, it was, it was delicious. I might have brought some down, and it might be gone already.
Thank you so much, Aaron. By the way, that was Aaron the Chance of Oil Tanner, yes.
Anything else for?
Uh, I think we're okay. We're about to, we're about to talk about the USDA loan application, so.
Hundred time.
Yippee. Thank you very much. Okay, so I, I think we're very close to being able to go public, cause here we are talking about it, so, I guess so. So the USDA is granting us a loan application for the culvert project to the tune of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It's about six thousand less than the three hundred and eighty-five thousand that the town authorized us for, and it's only because of how the budgets fell in place. So here's the letter of, uh, yeah, okay, here's the letter of acceptance from them. Uh, and here's, uh, the loan resolution that this board has to consider. And, you know, not hearing anything that says we shouldn't, I'm gonna read it out loud, so I'm gonna ask you for your patience while I do that. And our town clerk is here to notarize our, our signatures. Alright, this is the loan resolution. And at the end, I'll ask one of us, actually you, I will ask you to move to adopt this, okay? I'm gonna read the loan resolution. "A resolution of the select board of the town of Rollinsford, New Hampshire, authorizing and providing for the incurrence of indebtedness for the purpose of providing a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, enlarging, improving, and/or extending its culverts and storm drain repair to serve an area lawfully within its jurisdiction to serve. Whereas it is necessary for the town of Rollinsford, New Hampshire, herein after called the association, to raise a portion of the cost of such undertaking by issuance of its bonds in the principal amount of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and no cents, pursuant to the provisions of New Hampshire statutes annotated, and whereas the association intends to obtain assistance from the United States Department of Agriculture, herein called the government, acting under the provisions of the Consolidated Farm and Rural Development Act, seven USC nineteen twenty-one at sequencia, in the planning, financing, and supervision of such undertaking and the purchasing of bonds lawfully issued in the event that no other acceptable purchaser for such bonds is found by the association. Now therefore, in consideration of the premises of the association, hereby resolves. Number one, to have prepared on its behalf and to adopt an ordinance or resolution for the issuance of its bonds containing such items and in such forms as are required by state statutes and as are agreeable and acceptance, and acceptable to the government. Two, to refinance the unpaid balance in whole or in part of its bonds upon the request of the government if at any time it shall appear to the government that the association is able to refine its bonds by obtaining a loan for such purposes from responsible cooperative or private sources at reasonable rates and terms for loans for similar purposes in periods of time as required by section three thirty-three C of said Consolidated Farm and Rural Development Act, seven USC nineteen eighty-three C. Number three, to provide for, execute, and comply with Form RD four hundred dash four assurance agreement and Form RD four hundred dash one equal opportunity agreement." By the way, I have another comment.
No, you're doing great.
Okay. Sorry, was I? Okay, so we have to comply with Form RD four hundred four assurance agreement and Form RD four hundred one equal opportunity agreement, including an equal opportunity clause, which clauses to be incorporated in or attached as a rider to each construction contract and subcontract involving in excess of ten thousand dollars. Number four, to indemnify the government for any payments made or losses suffered by the government on behalf of the association. Such indemnification shall be payable from the same source of funds pledged to pay the bonds or any other legally permissible source. Number five, that upon default in the payments of any principal and accrued interest on the bonds or in the performance of any covenant or agreement contained herein or in the instruments intended incident to making or insuring the loan, the government at its option may, A, declare the entire principal amount then outstanding and accrued interest immediately due and payable. B, for the account of the association payable from the source of funds pledged to pay the bonds or any other legally permissible source, incur and pay reasonable expenses for repair, maintenance, and operation of the facility, and such other reasonable expenses as may be necessary to cure the cause of default, and/or C, take possession of the facility, repair, maintain, and operate a rented. Default under provisions of this resolution or any instrument incident to the making or insuring of a loan may be construed by the government to constitute default under any other instrument held by the government and executed or assumed by the association, and default under any such instrument may be construed by the government to constitute default hereunder. Number six, not to sell, transfer, lease, or otherwise encumber the facility or any portion thereof, or interest therein, or permit others to do so without the prior written consent of the government. Number seven, not to defees the bonds or to borrow money entered into any contractor agreement or otherwise incur any liabilities for any purpose in connection with the facility exclusive of normal maintenance without the prior written consent of the government if such undertaking would involve the source of funds pledged to pay the bonds. Eight, to place the proceeds of the bonds on deposit in an account and in a manner approved by the government. Bonds may be deposited in institutions insured by the state or federal government or invested in readily marketable securities backed by the full faith and credit of the United States. Any income from these accounts will be considered as revenues of the system. Number nine, to comply with all applicable state and federal laws and regulations and to continually operate and maintain the facility in good condition. Number ten, to provide for the receipt of adequate revenues to meet the requirements of debt service, operation, and maintenance and the establishment of adequate reserves. Revenue accumulated over and above that needed to pay operating and maintenance, debt service, and reserves may only be retained or used to make prepayments on the loan. Revenues cannot be used to pay any expenses which are not directly incurred for the facility financed by USDA. No free service or use of the facility will be permitted. Number eleven, to acquire and maintain such insurance and fidelity bond coverage may be required by the government. Number twelve, to establish and maintain such books and records relating to the operation of the facility and its financial affairs, and to provide for the required, for required audit thereof as required by the government, to provide the government a copy of each such audit without its request, and to forward to the government such additional information and reports as it may from time to time require. Number thirteen, to provide the government at all reasonable times access to all books and records relating to the facility and access to the property of the system, so that the government may ascertain that the association is complying with the provisions hereof and of the instruments incident to making or insuring of a loan, to the making or insuring of a loan. Number fourteen, but if the government requires that a reserve account be established, dispersments from that account or accounts may be used when necessary for payments due on the bond if sufficient funds are not otherwise available and prior approval of the government is obtained. Also, with the prior written approval of the government, funds may be withdrawn and used for such things as emergency maintenance, extensions to facilities, and replacement of short-lived assets. Number fifteen, to provide adequate service to all persons within the service area who can feasibly and legally be served and to obtain USDA's concurrence prior to refusing new or adequate services to such persons. Upon failure to provide services which are feasible and legal, such person shall have a direct right of action against the association of public body. Number sixteen, to comply with the measures identified in the government's environmental impact analysis for this facility for the purpose of avoiding or reducing the adverse environmental impacts of the facility's construction or operation. I would read item number seventeen, but it relates to a grant, and this is, we're not filling this out, so there's no grant involved. To accept a grant in the amount of not to exceed in its play, so that is not applicable. That's it for the terms, this one final paragraph. The provisions hereof and of the provisions of all instruments incident to the making or the insuring of a loan unless otherwise specifically provided by the terms of such instruments shall be binding upon the association as long as the bonds are held or insured by the government or assignee. The provisions of section six through seventeen hereof may be provided for in more specific detail in the bond resolutional ordinance. To the extent that the provisions contained in such bond resolutional order and it should be found to, to be inconsistent with the provisions hereof, these provisions shall be construed as controlling between the association and the government or assignee. Before, before I ask you to move this, I'll just make a couple of clarifying comments. The, the, uh, references to facility don't really pertain to us, cause it's not a facility. So, you know, we're not gonna be in the position of trying to sell these culverts to anybody, for example, because they're not of that nature. There are no service fees associated with them, so, so those are, that's the standard resolution. And otherwise, it pretty much says, you know, you're gonna pay us back, and, and at some point in time, if interest rates go crazy or kafluie, you know, they could ask us to go search for another, you know, another bond, or another, you know, at some point. They rarely do that, I'm just saying that is we, that is part of this resolution. And just also, while it's not here, if, this is a thirty-year note at two point seven, two point seven five percent interest.
So the actual interest rate will be, um, right now is at two point seven five till July first. The actual interest rate will be lower of the interest rate in effect at the time of loan obligation or loan closer.
Yeah.
I was kinda right there, I was just gonna say that into the motion, you want that in motion?
No, because this is where, this, this particular resolution that we're, that we're needing to move and sign and have our town clerk attest to, so, would you like to?
Sure, move to adopt the USDA loan resolution bond into the amount of three, uh, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine and no cents for a term of thirty years.
I will second, I'm sorry, I will second. And I am gonna ask for, you know, yays and nays, and we're gonna count you, Michael, cause we still feel very strongly that you are a valid member of the board.
I appreciate it.
So, alright, so, how many, I'll ask for the yay votes on this resolution? All in favor say yes. I guess I had a roll call, didn't I? Michael?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Suzanne? Yes. There are no nays, we have three yeses, nobody absent. Shall we sign this? Yes, we shall, okay. Now, we're gonna do it in duplicate, so, let's see. And you have your seal too?
I do.
Very good.
So, let's see, the Witten's were of the select board. Of the town of Rollinsford, New Hampshire has duly adopted this resolution and caused it to be executed by the officers below in duplicate on this seventeenth day?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Of April, May seventeen. And there were three ayes. Okay, Kate, if you're ready, I'll start signing the other one. And when we actually close, like October, November, we will have someone else to sign.
Thank you.
Pardon? No, you have to, you have to be the one who said yes, but, otherwise, it authorizes me to sign it, but I need your vote to authorize it. So three ayes, zero nays, zero absent.
Is that one ready?
Yes, it is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that okay?
Here you move up. We're also not anticipating sort of like the separate accounts and this and that, because really, what will happen is that we'll pay this out as we go along, it's gonna be done at the end of, sometime in the fall, and so, we'll just get the reimbursable money for the.
Yes, we don't sign a closing, so I'm just keeping it.
Yes, let's, let's put that, the two. I'll keep one of these originals in this folder. Is that one? Okay.
Yep.
And we'll send the other one off to the USDA. And then we'll keep these, oh, the two, yes, the two, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you so much. And town clerk, we appreciate your coming in.
Please sit on the stove.
Alright, enjoy. So, one out of three. I'll give an update, I'll give an update later on. Uh, Chief Rutherford?
Short and sweet, one, one piece of business recently.
You're done, right?
I just have one non-public.
Go ahead, no, no.
You have a non, a non-public?
Something that's come up. But, these guys can do their thing, and then it's clear.
Alright.
One purchase order to submit. It's not one of those annual dues things. It's purchase order number eleven thirty-six, and it is to the Seacoast Technical Assistance Response. It's the start team, basically, and basically, it's our annual dues for hazards. So we have an incident down in Architect. So, we have an incident down, and our potential is as high as anybody else with the training and whatnot, so. It's for that entity, and it's for a total of $604.
Six hundred?
Six hundred and four, yeah, for our annual 2017 dues. Purchase order number 1136, the Seacoast Technical Assistance Response Team, for 2017 annual membership dues for $604.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Everybody understands what that is, okay? I mean, if we had an incident, obviously, we're not going to be able to handle it on our own. So, that is basically the regional response team with all our expertise and our equipment and whatnot, and just make the call, and that's the team. It's based on a combination, most of the stuff's unfortunate, but it's based on a course of experience over about 40 member teams, so they can try to help us alleviate whatever we need to do. And our backup team is the shipyard, which isn't a plus for their response. So, that's how we cover those issues. Hopefully, never need one.
Absolutely, always.
But we have participated as a team over at the shipyard most recently, right?
Yeah, yeah, we've sent our.
Goes back and forth.
Yeah, exactly. This is a lot like the same as mutually kind of thing goes. That's what we've been doing all week, we've been to six other communities in the last week, so it's been really busy over at the fire station. So, this falls along the same lines, the mutually stuff. Yes, we went to the shipyard, I don't know, four, five years ago for the submarine burnout, and so it all kind of goes around, comes around, so.
So, well, as long as you're here, I mean, one update is that GNC is going to review the.
The 19th, right?
Yeah, so that's this week.
That's two days.
Yeah, the Derogrant, the final hurdle on the Derogrant.
And then it goes to the governor's desk, correct?
That's it, it's, this is governor and council, so this is it. There's no other hurdle.
I had lunch with Councilor Valinsky today, actually, and I don't think there's any problems, so.
And contacted I have Homeland Security, guy did the same way, because he answers to the governor, and I had conversations with him, he says he doesn't see any issues on our side.
So, the money comes from the feds, and it's already in place, so it's passed through, so, but, you know, until you get the final signature.
You do what you're doing right there tonight, I understand. Yeah, and like I said, you know, last week we went to inside the truck, and talking with Jerry McKay, and basically, we're going to get monthly updates on the construction of the truck, there's going to be pictures and all that stuff that should be coming in, so I'll bring it in and share it with you so you can see the progress on how that project is going also, so. That's a pipeline now.
All right, thank you.
Anything else for me?
Great to stay today, keep everybody else safe, it's so busy.
We met everybody else's time the last week, it's been created a bit of a force, but we spent six hours in North Borough, we were in South Borough the other day, so.
Stay safe.
Go, go, go. Well, it's good, keep the guys close.
Caroline, you don't have a, you don't have a, you're not here for that?
No, I'm listening.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. So, you, I'm sorry, so you want to talk to us about, in a non-public, is that? Okay, so.
For what?
Personal. I'm moving to a non-public session for the folks that deal with personal issue.
Second.
All right, roll call, Michael. We're back in session, thank you.
Oh, excuse me.
So, in actuality, we need not have gone into non-public, so I'm going to say exactly what happened at this meeting so that it's completely public. And we've provided, you know, some guidance about what, when we do need to go into non-public. So, what the road agent has asked is permission to advertise for additional help for the highway department in the road labor line that we have budgeted at $50,800. So, he is going to work with Caroline and put an ad in. Some of the folks that he has had who have been paid from that line have had changes in their own employment status and the like, and are no longer quite as available, so we get, we have given him the okay to post, and we've gone over the budget amount, which is $15,800 in all. And I think you're going to, you're going to budget, you're going to advertise it at 1435. So, that's what, that's pretty much what we bore, that's pretty much what we, what went on in that session. Okay, so, we're going to continue on, there are no other department heads, so we're in town administration, appointments, we have appointed John Krabs, we're just waiting for like this little contract statement.
Blind as I am.
Yes.
Just want to have a pointy member.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, we should work on that even though the police are not here. Yes, thank you, Michael, glad you're not completely blind. So, one of the jobs that are, a task that's part of the timeline that was put in place for the police space needs project is to appoint members to this committee. And so, we asked for people to let us know before, I think today, I think today was the deadline, and Caroline sent us an email. Rep? And, yes, so, let's see.
It was sent today?
It was sent today, Police Department Space Needs, okay. So, here are the people who have volunteered to be on the Space Needs Committee. Howard Hammond, Kim St. Elire, Denise Knowles, Bill Irving, and Charlie Putnam, depending on how much work is involved. So, we have those folks, we have, both of you, I think, have expressed interest in serving on those, is that, do I remember that correctly?
I think only one of us, and Jody wants to, that's fine. I'm not straight at work until July, so if you want to do it, by the time I come.
Can we flip off as we go along?
I would, I would say that it's better to have a committed board member, and to just have somebody there in, you know, as a backup in case.
If you've got, you know, the thing to do, I'll do it.
Are you also?
I want to.
I'll do it.
Okay, so you're okay, so we'll have, Michael?
I'll make it work.
So, you can also be sort of like the plan, any, any sort of go-between, between that committee and the planning board to any extent that we need that. Okay, so.
I wanted a police. We wanted a.
Well, we need Chief Ducharme, I don't know whether he, did he request also a lieutenant or is he?
Yeah, he and lieutenant, and you had mentioned you wanted a retired police.
Well, you get that with Bill, I guess, some other time.
And then you wanted a budget committee.
Well, we've got, so, so Kim, Denise, and Bill are also budget committee, not, not that they are, you know, the budget committee isn't meeting until sometime next week, I think, or whatever, but nonetheless, either any of those three, to the extent that they serve, could end up being the budget committee rep to this process.
So, Kim, Bill, Howard, Denise, and there was a fifth?
There was Charlie Putnam, but he says depending upon how much work is involved, so I don't know how to respond to that. It's going to be pretty intense at this beginning part of it, I think. It's big. What did you come up with?
Seven, if you exclude Charlie, so, because we were saying two from the police unit, right? The lieutenant and the chief?
My, Howard, Kim, Denise, Bill, that's good.
I think it's viable. If you include Charlie, and if you can't do it, you can't do it, I mean.
Well, I'd love Charlie, but here's my devil's advocate, he's the moderator. When this goes to, to the public, he's going to be moderating that meeting.
Yeah.
Is there any?
No, I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, just throw it in.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, you never know, but he, he, so, you mean like a bond warrant when it comes to town?
Yeah, anything like that, like he's going to be moderating it and presenting it, and, well, not presenting it, but.
He won't be presenting it, he won't be presenting it, so he will.
But these folks are purely advisors, I mean, so it's.
Correct.
They're not having any real responsible duties, or, I mean, they're just there to make essentially a recommendation to the board. All right, so then, let me just, let's just try, so, so is the board suggesting then that we appoint?
Just a second, so, when is the budget committee meeting again? Much week, you said?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, so it's two weeks?
Yes, but we can, I feel quite sure, though I can't speak for the budget committee, I feel quite sure that the budget committee will be happy to.
Fair enough, I just, I don't want to step on anyone's toes.
No, understood, so none of these three will be the actual appointed budget committee member, but could be, and so we'll assume that that will happen.
It'll be helpful with oral memoir, I don't, so, doesn't get too unworthy, but again.
So, so far, I have as appointees Mike Borello as ex officio from the board, Chief Ducharme and Lieutenant Yaraskovich, Howard Hammond, Kim St. Elire, Denise Knowles, Bill Irving, and Charlie Putnam. So, any further discussion?
Is there anyone else we, why is that? There's no other, I don't think of individual names, but any other professions we're not thinking of, or that could add to the conversation?
Well, the committee can almost reach out in a subcommittee sort of level, if, you know, like Howard, who's in the building trades, can maybe bring somebody else in if we need that.
I wasn't thinking more of subspecialty of the building trades, but, and I'm not sure if there is something else, I just, before we finalize, there's just.
We can always appoints.
Sure, why not?
All right, so, I've got the motion, I've got the second, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you get the names, Ellen?
I did.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do all of you have relatives that volunteer?
Yes. I don't, I can email all of these, and I will, except for Howard, I don't know if there's an email for Howard, so, but we'll have Caroline call later sometime. Okay, perfect, thank you. We've already, let's see, oh, yeah, we had to go back because we ignored that, all right. Now, now I'm on town administration. Planning board consultant, we've hired John Krabs, he is our planning board consultant, we're just waiting for a contract, so that's why it remains on the agenda. Library trustees, we appointed the alternate, so we can go over that. ZBA status of appointment. So, based on our, the board's meeting last week, I did send a follow-up to Joe Coed, who is currently serving as chair of the ZBA, to notify him that as far as, that we had appointed as a full voting member of the ZBA, John Hinsman, and that if he had any confusion about that, please come and see us, I don't see him here tonight, I'll assume that everything is now okay.
He usually responds via email.
He does.
So, I mean, it's not like he can email.
Right.
He doesn't usually get it, and he responds.
Right, he does get email.
Right.
So, I did do that. Budget one, I sent out the report to the board that I am about to, I will be sending out to the budget committee later this week. There was nothing particularly interesting other than the highway department, which, you know, we spent a lot of money on the winter this year, so they are sort of more than 25 percent of their budget. And we'll take a look at what it looks like next quarter, and if so, we'll move some of the contingency budget to some of these lines, because we'll have to get ready for winter, you know, November, December. So, but at this moment, we don't need to, I don't think to do anything like that. There are FY16 expenses that I've sequestered, they still come out of the report, but I yanked them out of the report and put them at the bottom, this is to the purchase order for the civil works engineers. And the other thing is, right now, there are hoil tanner expenses and professional services that will be transferred to the appropriate, to the appropriate bond warrants. Pardon? I don't know. Hi, Joe, come on up, we were just talking about you.
Oh, you were?
I guess, we sent you an email.
Yes, I did.
Yes.
I got it today, yeah. Oh. You know, I never got that notification you, you said you gave me.
Huh, we hadn't replied from you, we had a reply that said you didn't know him.
No. No, I didn't know him, no.
Right, so.
I didn't meet him until that evening.
So, we did appoint him.
Okay, I get that.
Good, all right.
And the reason I was asking, what, wasn't I made aware that there was a vacancy?
We told you also in January, I sent an email to all the board chairs that said, here are the, here are the vacancies that are coming up in your boards or commissions, so I sent it to you and Al Dion and Pat Macklin.
And I came here, I think the next week, you had an emergency.
Yeah, I was not there.
And we put that too, and those were posted in the town book, the town report.
What's his name?
Well, that's, that doesn't appoint them, those were your recommendations as chair at the time.
Right, right. I was, I didn't know, I, that was the end of the communication, I had a question about Mr. Moore.
That's where Moore, couldn't have been the last name.
Dennis Moore, because we hadn't seen him.
Right.
You know, I was using Paul Casal, and he's been attending a lot of the meetings, so I was wondering, what's the purpose of the role of an alternate? I would have suggested that we move the alternate into failure vacancy.
Well, the board thought, when we talked about this, the board thought that it would be helpful to have a crossover representative from the planning board, which is something that's been recommended by the municipal association, for example. So, we used the opportunity to appoint John Hinsman, who serves on the planning board, to be a full member. And Paul is, remains an alternate, Paul Casal remains an alternate, as does, I think, Gary, is it Gary Fieldson?
Fieldson, I suppose.
Yeah, Gary, we don't see too much, but Paul has been very faithful, yeah. As a matter of fact, I've had some problems because he's a product of the planning board in some ways.
Who is Paul?
And this is not a planning board, it's a board of appeals, or an adjutant to the Superior Court, you understand that? And I finally got him organized, I guess, pretty well, he understands that, but it's not something new. This particular case that we had, in fact, it's coming up beginning a couple of weeks, we could have just thrown it out. In fact, when he approached me back in December, one time ago, it was really a Mickey Mouse project, you know, and I want to be fair to the people in town, so, and we had that authority too, we can, so I told him, the time's going to cost you a bit of money, get yourself a designer, an architect, get a survey, because we need specifications. Well, that's not required by the planning board, with us it is required, required, because we are, we are a judicial body, so you can't take any chances, otherwise, we'll end up with the same problems that we had when Mrs. Stockdale sold her property, and the two nephews inherited that, and they sold it, and eventually, they sold it to a developer. I think in the first few years, we had at least three, maybe four cases that had to come to us, because the developer did not follow the plans and yet superseded the boundaries. And one day, he's mad, I came into the post office in tears, because of property, something like, they went to the last minute, I guess, like we all do, I guess, in certain things, so, we don't want that to happen. So, I, then he, then he was vacant, didn't want to spend that kind of money, apparently, but I heard from him again a couple of weeks ago, and now he's back. Well, we held a meeting about two weeks ago, a hearing, and we gave him a chance, and we told him to go back and get his, we, I think the next, the next hearing we made it for it. We could have just told him, you know, it's going to be defeated, plain and simple. The reason I did, I put Paul Casal that night, because we had six members here, and I was involved with this gentleman in a way, and I don't, I don't want to go over the boundary, I mean, there's legal entanglements here, but I spoke to him about two days ago, three days ago, he came to the house, and I told him, no, you've got to prove your hardship, and you're going to be, I don't, I told him, you're appealing a decision made to section seven, he didn't even know that. I don't, I can't be the attorney for the defendant.
Well, I appreciate that, Joe, we have to be really, really careful, right? The zoning board has to be careful, and we have to make sure that you all are not meeting with the applicant.
And no intimidation of anybody.
Right, so it's probably best, you know, not to meet with them, because what we're trying, what we need to make sure is that other folks who might be affected by the ruling of the ZBA, then don't go and try to sue the town, because you, because someone has been talking to the applicant.
That's right, but if you go through the thick chapter that comes in the state, with the history of zoning boards, they give a lot of latitude. As a matter of fact, one of my more conservative members that evening seemed to be telling him, you know, take this back and get it done, and his remorse, more or less, we're not going to vote on it tonight, we're going to delay it, which we did, and I'm getting together with Sarah, and I think it's going to be made afford right now, when the date's available for her. And I hopefully, hopefully Lydia will still be around in those days, you know, I mean, I had a lot of problems with my friend.
Sorry.
But, that's nothing to do with my responsibilities here, but after 37 years, it was pretty close. So, anyway, Paul has really got involved, he's even taken pictures of that property, I understand, from his neighbors.
He's a wonderful committee member, he also serves on the Slough Water Committee.
He has to be, he has to be gavelled down once in a while, but that's all right, I can do that. And I think, in fact, I did the same thing with, I think, Mr. Rolla one time, when you came to the Plan Board.
Mr. Rolla?
Oh yes, I, I had him participate, but no vote, the first time.
Yes, I wouldn't gavel down, I didn't vote.
Oh, I see.
I wasn't alternate at one time.
Right, so.
Clear that number right back.
Thank you.
And Mr. Johnson used to come in almost every, every hearing, because then I, I do bring a gavel with me. Because of that hearing, he did gavel. And, you know, he meant well, but there's a certain period of time where it, we have to tape everything, it had to be judicial. So, this next meeting, May the 4th, I will probably, I hate to, uh, to change the membership, unless someone, unless there's a reason for that hearing.
Well, Joe, I mean, he is the, he's been appointed, John Hinsman has been appointed as the full CBA Board Member. I don't know how you could not seat him.
Well, because I've never seen him at a hearing. And we are separate body from the Planning Board.
Yes, but he is, he is, we have appointed him to the Zoning Board of Adjustments.
Right.
He happens to be a Planning Board member as well, but we appointed him to fill the term on the Zoning Board of Adjustments. So, I'm saying, I don't know how you could not seat him. He is the board's.
Well, then I may, then I may excuse myself, I'll run the meeting and I'll vote, if, if everybody shows up. You know, for years, I was crying about not having membership. And with my, my pleas at the town meetings, now we have pretty good membership, actually.
That's a good thing.
And they're all different bodies, they're all different minded. It's like the old days, you know, there's no way in the world you could change Obed Vial's mind, or Eli Kowinski's mind, or Fred Green's mind, and were, who are individuals. Sonny Foss, I mean, you know, these people, they, they vote their mind. And they understand that there's no precedence with the zoning board. Every case is an individual case. This particular gentleman, I was kind of surprised, because we do have the, the, the opportunity to not have to accept professional plans designed. The statutes, not statutes, but the guidelines do allow us that. Unless in cases, we feel that it isn't that important. This particular instance, it may not be, because there's quite a bit of property out there.
Well, I'm not familiar with the case, and I don't need to be familiar with it, and the board doesn't need to be familiar with the case. But we, we would appreciate your seating, Mr. Hinsman, at this next.
Even though he didn't understand what the procedures were of the Board of Appeals.
He's a full member, everybody starts out new.
Is that fair to the community?
He's not, he, I don't know how else to say this, we have, we've appointed him, Joe.
He didn't seem to be offended, in fact, he participated. But if you, if you're required, and you're not going to intimidate me anyway, I mean, I think you know that by now, I'll think it over.
We're not trying to intimidate, we're tell, we're trying to say, though, that he is the board's appointee.
I, I understand that.
And the board has the right to appoint the membership of the Zoning Board of Adjustments.
Yes, you have.
So, we have done that, yeah. That's, that's the board's wish.
I'd like to get some cooperation. If there's a vacancy, I'd like to be made aware, but I'm going to be the chairman.
We made you aware of it, Joe, we sent out in January notices to all the board chairs, these are the vacancies that you have. Please, if you want to make a recommendation, please make a recommendation. I was not there, you came. Dennis Moore has not, has not been to any 2016 Zoning Board of Adjustment.
You're right.
And so, we reappointed Ron Shabbat, who was one of your recommended ones, and we appointed John Hinsman as, to fill that position. That's the board's appointee.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't playing games with you. I was never informed, I really was.
I could, I can send you the emails again.
Why don't you, because I, I had problems, I've had burn work on my computers, just so I can cover myself up.
Sure, I'd be happy to send you the emails.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming on, Joe. Have a safe walk across the street.
It was a long ride.
Good night.
See ya.
Good night, Joe.
Good night, Joe.
Okay. That was quite topical, timely.
Yeah.
Were we, were we finished with the 41 report? Yes, if you have any questions, I sent you the link. Okay. Voting on, voting on planning rate schedule?
Recall last week, it didn't make it on, it didn't make it on for some reason. The Planning Board have made recommendations as to changes of the fee schedule, and would like the approval of the, of the Select Board. I recall it was changes to the, uh, the fee to send out registered mail, or certified mail, rather, to butters and advertising costs.
Do we have them, do we, do we know what we're voting on, do we have the detail?
Is it in the?
Is it, I don't know, is it somewhere?
It wouldn't be in my folder, it would be in what, it would be in.
Do you have anything on that? We need something to vote on.
I don't think I did see it.
$10 for mail, and $250 for advertising, but if it's not there, I agree, we shouldn't be voting on it unless we have it.
Was it an email?
I truly don't know.
I don't remember seeing it this morning.
Nothing, nothing is really popping up in my email, which doesn't mean it isn't there.
I was traveling all day, so I didn't check emails, so I apologize.
So, we'll, I'll check with Caroline. Do you think she, does, would she have this? Is it, was this of, an action of the Planning Board or?
Yes.
Okay, so if.
At a public hearing, last November.
Okay, so, but, can Sarah, so they're in the minutes? Alright, so we can, I'll ask Sarah.
My understanding is Sarah was forwarding it to Caroline, it would be in the folder, so.
Let me see if I had something from Sarah. First thing that pops up is November 1st, so.
I don't think so.
So, let's, I'll just make a note, we'll have to postpone it a week.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you.
Okay. So, we're looking for the recommendations for fee increases. Okay, for the Planning Board, okay, so we'll table that. Uh, review of legal priorities, I, I want us to table this too, but, but maybe next week. What I'd like us to do is review all the things that are sort of in the pipeline, and maybe prioritize, and maybe, you know, postpone or whatever, because things are starting to pile up, I guess. So, I mean, we're still fine, but I think it's good for us to maybe take stock and see what's on the list, and make sure we're absolutely clear about what we want legal to be working on. Uh, Stormwater Committee, I met last week and went over with them the 27 work that we budgeted, and they did recommend that we put forward two purchase orders to the board. And they're both two Public Water Systems Services, which is Scott McLean's company. And I think Jody is on the hunt for them.
Public Water what?
PWSS, Public Water Systems Services.
System Services.
Yes, so, one is, and I'll ask Jody to move it if she would like, one is two Public Water Systems for their annual testing. And we did the first annual testing last week. And so, it'll be one purchase order that will cover spring testing and fall testing. So, it'll be three outflows, twice a year, so that's at $120 apiece, so that's for a total of 720, so.
What line is coming out?
The Stormwater Management under the Highway Department.
Okay. So, do you want me?
Yeah, it should be there, yeah, yeah, she didn't do that.
Cover it.
Yeah. Are you in there, are you looking it up?
It should be right there. Does it have a real number? Yes, it does, thank you.
Sometimes these new ones have 999999.
Okay.
Beautiful.
And they're both put in the same one?
No, I'll talk about this one, let's do this one, I'll save what this one does.
Okay, move to Except Purchase Order 1174 to PWSS.
PWSS.
P, PWSS. Six, seven falls, river outflow testing, three in the spring, three in the fall. At $120 each, for a total of $720.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, why don't you move this one, and then I'll talk about it? Unless there isn't enough there to. Let me talk about it. Yes, it is the same code, yeah, I'll, I'll talk about it. So, this is another one, I'll let you fill it out, this is another one to Public Water System Services. And this is, the purchase order will result in installing some check dams in Stockdale Circle along a part that, that, it's a really deep ditch that's eroding someone's side lawn, and it goes, flows into Partridge Lane. So, we don't know really the source of the silt that's flowing down and eroding. And so, the check, the check dams are not a permanent sort of installation, they're to, to provide some diagnostic, and also to, to help with the erosion, but it's mostly to provide some diagnostics. So, the Stormwater Committee does recommend that we do this, and it has been budgeted.
Alright, move to Except Purchase Order 1175 to PWSS.
Thank you.
So, thank you for correction. For 10 dams, for 10 installations of check dams in Stockdale Circle, run off ditches, at $60 apiece, for a total of $600.
I'll call a question just a minute, I also, so, I, we're speaking to Scott McLean, and asked him, do you want us to send out letters or whatever, he says he'll just knock on doors if he has, he has to walk out somebody's lawn to go put the check dams, so, is the board okay with that?
What, does he have, like, an official shirt to wear?
Well, he would have, he would have his PWSS shirt.
Should we at least send out an email saying that somebody's going to be coming?
Yeah, I would prefer that, actually, yes. Let's do that, I like that idea.
Because of the day and age.
Yeah, absolutely.
PWSS means nothing to me.
Yes.
Well, does now.
Yes. That's a good idea.
Since we just had Avatar coming.
Yeah, exactly.
I agree.
Very good. Okay. Okay. Alright, I'm ready to call a question, all those in favor of this PO for $600, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Not right.
Alright, so, I'm going to give you some updates on our various projects, the projects themselves, the financing associated with them, blah, blah, blah. So, the Culvert Process Project, we received the loan, and they have a PR person, they being USDA Rural Services of Rural Community Services. And so, unless the board has some objection, they can help us put together some PR to notify the community.
An extra cost?
No, 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 no cost. Understood, no cost. What a good question. So, I will, I will put that in place, then I will say, yeah, could you help us? Easements, so, we did have a meeting last Friday, and in fact, we worked, the, the two of us who thought that the property owner's privacy needed to be honored were correct. Hoyle Tanner and their property person, the discussions with the property owners are private. However, what's public, and this, this is what we didn't have ahead of time, but I will announce it, is the, the initial offer, and we just, you know, the timing happened not, not in the best possible way. So, so I, I will say, we got a, a letter from Avatar, early Friday morning, where Avatar said, he's looked at the easements, he's looked at the properties, and he, Avatar felt that there was no inherent cost to the homeowner, that we were, if anything, were going to improve the property rather than take a hit. So, he thought, he thought we needed to offer nothing. So, Hoyle Tanner, however, says we need to have some minimum offers. And so, what, so what we offered was either $250, which was the minimum for the smaller easement requests, and $500 for the larger ones, there were two that were, I think, over 2,000 square feet. So, those were our opening things. And that, you know, would have been nice if we could have made that public ahead of time, that's the public piece. The, the individual homeowner's response to that is, is not public until they sign, sign it. So, we had, there are six easements involved, two on Pine, the rest are Willie. On Willie Street, the school just signed a temporary construction easement, so there was no, so we're all set there. Mr. Degno agreed to the offer, he was a $500 offer, he agreed to that. He needs to, the easement itself has to be signed by both him and his wife, but his wife is not available. So, he should be bringing that to us this week. There are two others there, one was, I'm not, Morganelli, and Hoyle Tanner went out and looked at his property with him, and he's still thinking about it. And then Robinson, and Robinson is coming in tomorrow at 4:00, so we'll make them live $250 offer. So, that's Willie. Pine Street, Mrs. Adams, Kate Adams came in and signed the easement, accepted the offer, so that's complete. And the other easement that we need there is St. Laurent, who does not live in town, it's a, it's an empty, it's an undeveloped lot. And so, we're in contact with him and hope that we, we can get him to come in. So, that's where the easements are. Any questions or comments on them? We've done the resolution, reviewed, reviewed some of the paperwork, talked about the announcement and the PR. There are a couple of things that we need to work on. One is that we need to have a conflict of interest policy, and that's further down on the list, I've, I've given us a draft to look at. We also need to implement a drug-free workplace, and, uh, which is really just posting some notices, letting people know, you know, sending an email. You're, I was going to ask you, Jody, this is something you might be interested in sort of helping us to coordinate, but maybe under these circumstances, not, or?
Okay.
What is involved? I can email you what's involved, and then you can.
You mean the conflict of interest and the drug free?
No, not, not the conflict, just, no, I, I'm happy to deal with conflict of interest, the drug-free workplace.
Oh, probably have something at work?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, just, all we need to do is sort of.
Yeah, you need to post it.
Yes, if you could find out the process that they use, yeah, you just copy it.
Yeah.
So, that would be helpful.
But you, this is for the.
It's for the USDA, we have to.
For our staff.
Yes, for our staff, yes.
So, not to school, not to the.
Just town staff.
It's not part of our personal policy, no?
No, we don't have anything in the personal policy, like this. Alright, so if you could do some research on that, that would be helpful. So, that's the Culvert. Even though it's not in the agenda as such, the Fire Engine, we've actually done the purchase order, signed the contract. USDA is not going to be able to review our loan request until early May. They're still working on these, the Stormwater and Waste Water Stop, of which our two requests were part of. So, in early May, she said she'd be able to get on to that. And I thought maybe we had disqualified ourselves by already signing the contract, she said, no. So, we're still in the running, if we get it, it's 2.75. So, that would be nice, and we'll find out in May, otherwise, the bond bank is.
June, right?
We'll know before then, but we get the month, yeah.
The issue.
Yeah, June or July, something like that, yeah. So, so that's the Fire Engine. The Transfer Station, that's $190,000. Uh, the board. The board felt that we could not, and this was one of the things we did in, in non-private a couple of weeks ago. Non-public, sorry. Because the USDA, you know, didn't want us talking about these at the time. So, we decided to withdraw our application for the Transfer Station loan from the USDA, because it would require more engineering oversight, and we feel that today, we can bring this project in under budget. If we follow USDA, we feel strongly that we would not be able. today we can bring this project in under budget. If we follow USDA, we feel strongly that we would not be able to. So we thank them very much and we will likely now use the bond bank for that one. I guess that's it for that. As far as town hall drainage, we have not heard back from Mr. Gannon. We sent in the notice of a warrant yet fifteen days. So Caroline said she would follow up with him. That's kind of where the projects are right now. Is there any, any questions on that? On any of the... I, I'm wanting, I will be talking to Bond Counsel tomorrow about our tax status. I don't know exactly what that means. She sent me some sheets. But she needs to be able to tell respective, uh, loan quotes that yes, we are, our bonds are tax-free. Right? Municipal bonds are, are not subject to taxation. So they need, they, the potential loaners, need that certification, so... So that's what this conversation will be tomorrow with Bond Counsel. She also told me, she called me today, she said that her engagement letter, which was for about seventy-five hundred dollars for fees, were geared towards one process, in other words, the bond bank. To the extent that we have the bond bank, one USDA loan for the culvert, possibly another USDA loan, that that fee would, would increase. She is going to let me know. I'm not terribly concerned because we've got, you know, five thousand built, built in for her in the culvert. So, so, you know, so it's both in our operating budget and in some of these warrants. So we won't, I think we're not going to run into financial trouble. She's going to ballpark it, the initial fee for us.
Well, thank you for managing all that.
You're welcome. I don't, I'm, I'm hoping that we can get, we've got a couple of calls. We're not juggling anymore. But I'm hoping that we have, we, I'm hoping we're not juggling any of them by the time I have to leave for three weeks. Yeah, exactly. Because, you know, as it is now, we have to make sure that there are these two of us, please, who are signing these things, so... Okay. So I'm not gonna hyperbolic about it just yet. So with regard to our transfer station project, one of the reasons that I think we can bring this in under budget is because as with the road contract we had with Pike for the reason that we did it, we also have a proposal from him for the transfer station for the repaving and retaining wall. And it is just under a hundred and forty thousand. We have a quote from Atlantic Recycling. Do you, do you have both of those? So let's talk about them and see if we wanna act on them tonight. So we have what had been a proprietary proposal from Pike Industries to cover the paving and the regrading and the retaining wall for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. So I'm gonna put that aside for a minute. From Atlantic Recycling, we have a quote for them for the equipment. And we're going to change this because it is, has two compactors and we only need one. So we'll change this to seven thousand, two hundred for one compactor. And can you, does somebody have a calculator? If we take thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and subtract seven thousand, two hundred, thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Three thousand, one ninety-five.
And we subtract seven thousand, two hundred, we get?
Three thousand, one ninety-five.
That doesn't make sense. Cause it's thirty-seven thousand.
Three thousand. It's thirty thousand, one ninety-five.
Thirty thousand, okay, not three thousand. Is that how you... Thirty thousand. Makes sense. One ninety-five. Will you do it? Do you have the same number?
I will do it again.
Is that thirty thousand, one ninety-five? Okay, perfect.
Why don't you just do it again, just so we're all, read the numbers to me again, please.
Thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five. Minus seven thousand, two hundred.
Seven thousand, two hundred. Thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-five.
All right, so that takes care of the, so with the equipment and the, uh, Pike proposal, we have about twenty thousand left for the concrete pads. We're in the process of getting quotes for the pads. And to the extent that it's over twenty thousand, I, I don't know that it will be. Jeff seems to think that we can get them in. But if it's over, we can always reduce the three pads to two pads and put the third one back on the CIP. So board, if you're willing to, uh, either talk about these things some more or actually vote to authorize these contracts?
Uh, one of the things on the Pike homes is that they're want, they're, um, gonna be doing a three-inch, um, layer of concrete, of asphalt.
Yes.
So, um, just, and, and just because of the heavy equipment that is gonna be coming in and out constantly. Cause it has to carry that. I just think that's a good idea. Where on Bear Road, we talked about inch and a half to two inches. And, you know, we went round and round, yeah, twenty minutes on that. I, I don't question a three-inch when you're dealing with...
Thank you for pointing that out.
When you're dealing with, um, such heavy equipment. Cause they're gonna be hauling out twelve-ton loads every week.
So because, because of all the heavy equipment, the, the three-inch that we're putting there is, is a really good thing. And that's the justification for...
So when someone, so when someone asks why that number is so high.
Thank you. So, it's good to have you. Thank you for that. Anything else, uh, that we might notice, okay, that if you, if you're...
Uh, move to accept, um, uh, move to accept first order.
We, no, we'll, we'll, we'll sign the quote and then we'll make it into a contract, just like we did the road. But we need to have a start.
Do we need a warrant number?
What do we, yes.
I did, I need to pull out my book.
That's good. Let's do it.
Which one of the transfer station improvements is warrant article number seven?
Is it seven?
Seven.
Okay.
Move to accept, um, proposal from Pike Industries for warrant article number seven for transfer station improvements for a total of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
You don't wanna do it, do you? Cause you're gonna be bonded.
Oh, I'm sorry. I second. Thank you, Mike. I'll second that.
I'll support it, but I mean, just in case.
I understand. No, I understand. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for being vigilant. I really appreciate it. Fire is the town hall number. Okay.
All right. Uh, move to accept, um, estimate from Atlantic Cyclo, Atlantic Recycling Equipment, um, for warrant article number seven, transfer station improvements for a total of thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I second. I won't discuss, but let's initial this change here, both of us. That one in the total. So, any discussion on this?
So we're confident that the, uh, the cost of the, was it a compactor? Is as simple as just divided by two. There isn't a, a multiple purchase discounting, gonna divide one to one.
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, I don't think so. I think if there is, it would, I think it would just absorb, yeah. And the other thing to point out is that, in case we don't, you know, some of us have forgotten or the public would like to be reminded, that compactor is larger than the current one. So what we expect to do is reduce our operating costs by this compactor, both because we have two and we will be doing full loads, which we have not been doing ever. And one of these loads will be bigger than the other one. So we're anticipating a reduction in operating costs. When we get these in motion, they're in place, then we'll, we'll be able to, in next year's budget, I think we'll have enough spareings to know what we've managed to save with that. Any other questions or comments on this? All right, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Sign it. I guess it's just some two pages. Page two, okay. Yes.
I can break it on my own.
We've also been told, just FYI, that asphalt, the asphalt are starting to creep up. So we're happy to have these things settled.
They locked on.
Oh, yeah. Okay, um, copying scanning. So this is just, uh, we don't have to address this tonight, but at some point I would really like us to look for alternatives to the Ricoh. Yeah, so that we can upgrade and provide more reliable scanning.
It doesn't work. I think we have Ricoh at work, too.
It, which is probably fine. It's not the Ricoh, it's the, the age of this particular Ricoh.
No, I understand.
Yeah, not, not a...
Maybe we found they were the best service for us, that was class effective and the best.
And that could well, that could still be the case. So what we need to talk to them about is how, how can we upgrade this equipment and what would it cost us and blah, blah, blah.
Well, what might be one to take that out of, is they're, they're ready to go when we're ready to go. But we didn't put it into the budget this year.
I, do you know what it cost?
So they will know that's just, that's just what, what I'm saying is that they will be, they're ready to give us quotes.
They may at least give us a quote. If we can't execute now, we can put it in the budget for next year.
Cause she wants printing capability to that wireless way and, well, they all do, they all do.
Yeah, absolutely. I would like, yeah.
And then it'll be a rental rather than an ownership.
Yeah.
So, like, does it come out of the supply line?
It would come out, so here's what we have available. It's a good question. So we have office equipment, which has like five hundred, office equipment repairs, which has a thousand.
You have four hundred left in office equipment.
And then, uh, the, you know, we could look to the IT line. Now, there may not be enough there. I don't know how this is going to come back, right? There may not be enough. But it gives us the, then, what to think about for the following year. So you, you'll follow up on that and give us some figures? I don't think there's any particular rush, but...
Yeah, I had done it at the beginning, so I still have.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, just get us correct.
Cause they were like, oh, can we deliver it next week? Last time I talked to them, so I don't wanna talk.
Good, but...
I don't wanna talk to them again until we're ready to like, at least no money.
Well, we're ready to consider it. How's that? We're ready to consider it, but we need to know what we're considering. I know when Bob did downstairs, he had some kind of deal where his daily, his regular operating expenses were gonna go down and it made up for his lease thing, so... So who knows? You know, maybe, maybe...
It's pretty much unheard of to buy a machine these days.
Yeah, it is. Exactly. Okay, let me find my agenda again here.
The technology changes, they break down all the time. And ink is usually included in a lot of these, um, rental business.
Or the, not the, uh, not the ink, but the toner.
Toner, that's all right.
Yeah, it is, it's what drives the...
The toner.
That's what we do.
All right. Letter regarding the trees at Chinburg. I think that Caroline is trying to find the plans, top, top, you know, he's taking care of it. But Caroline needs to find the plans so that he can address it. So that's the hunt that's currently underway. New Hope, New Hope housing tax exemption. We'll table it again. We haven't heard a final, uh, comment from our assessor. A water ban. So Caroline sent the board an email saying that a, a couple of residents have called in wondering if our water ban is still in existence. And it is, cause we put it in place until rescinded. But, uh, it prompted Caroline to check in with DES to see what the, what the water, the drought situation was like. And I will read the response from DES. Unless somebody has it in front of them and gets it sooner.
We are still a little low category about each level.
We're in moderate. I think we're in moderate, but...
We're not, we're not there yet.
We're not completely there.
Uh, water ban.
Water ban and current drought.
We are currently in a moderate drought, still as, still as below. This is on the agenda of our tonight.
So here's what DES said. The New Hampshire Drought Management Team just issued this press release yesterday. So that would've been the thirteenth. And there's a link. And it's according to the US Drought Monitor Map, Rosford remains in a moderate drought area. The New Hampshire Drought Management Team is concerned that much of New Hampshire remains in drought status as we head into peak water usage time. Groundwater resources have not returned to normal as they lag behind surface water. At a minimum, voluntary restrictions are recommended. If we see below normal precipitation and above normal temperatures, New Hampshire could easily be in severe drought once again. Same James Martin, Public Information Officer of DES.
So does Lincoln Place maybe send out a reminder to folks? Tell somebody dramatic changes.
Well, okay, I mean, well, let's talk about it. So let's talk about what it means to people. It means that they can put in new lawns, right? I mean, I believe what it said is no outdoor water usage. Is that correct? Can't wash cars?
I don't, I don't follow it.
I think it was only lawns. I'm pretty sure it's only lawns. Cause we all said, well, what about washing cars and all that? Fill in pools.
Uh, we should probably know what it is then, so let's, let's see what it is.
Cause we don't have our own ordinance. We had to follow whatever the...
We had to follow the states, yeah, I agree.
Emergency R S A.
Yes, and it was limited.
It was very limited.
It was limited.
And I believe it was only to the, all the lawns.
We need to know, I think we probably need to find it, so...
I don't know.
Exactly. Public health contains the restricted use of water from private wells or public systems.
Oh, it is. But we didn't, this isn't what we... We didn't vote on this because this was more than what we could, we didn't have a public vote, right? This was just somebody's, so that's not what we voted on.
Correct.
Yeah, so we'll have to look it up.
What we asked them to do was to take the exit, the poll, and incorporate it for Rollins. We're not busy to change Rollins, exit of Rollins with a few minor tweaks. But then we found out we couldn't do it.
Exactly. So this is, you know, it's good for us to, to consider a, a larger...
We figured we could have a hearing and try it, but...
A larger ordinance.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, we should at least know what we have put out. So I'll, let me get some information. I'll find it.
Two thousand sixteen.
Say anything?
Two thousand sixteen, oh two.
Yes, but we never voted on this. We didn't, we didn't do this because we didn't have time. We were, we had to act like right away. And so all we could do, as we read through some things, was to, to, uh, implement the restricted water ban that the state said we could do without doing an, an ordinance. So it was just that I don't remember what that said, so we'll need to find it. Unless, you know, one of you can...
It's on the drive, right?
It should be somewhere. It should be on either the website or somewhere. So if you wanted to take a look, you see, I'll, I'll march down the...
Sure.
So rec committee, anything, uh, new and different with the rec committee?
Uh, we are meeting again next week. Um, we have a signature to sign, um, a new hire. Yes, your water ban due to ongoing extreme drought conditions, Rosford, is your water ban banning water your residential laws while the ban does not officially go into effect until September twenty-seventh. Please consider the water usage carefully during this entry.
All it bans is the watering of lawns?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so shall we keep that in effect?
I would think.
All right, so we could just put out a little PR that says it's still in effect. And people can come talk to us if they, if there's some, if there's stress. On historical, non-lapsing count. I put this back on because there was some movement to...
We haven't met since...
Is there anything to report, Mike, or should we just...
Haven't met since last week.
Alright.
I'm gonna have to hear the report.
Okay. Policies, procedures, welfare. Jody has agreed to work with Caroline in sort of finalizing that. Conflict of interest. So we need a conflict of interest policy through USDA. So I cribbed something that, online, and, and sent you the link. And I thought we could at least have a starting conversation about that, see if you had any questions or...
When did you send that to me?
When did I send it?
It was last week.
Oh, last week.
Last week.
Yeah. So what I thought, so one of the things that it does is it says that we're going to ask some of the principal, you know, the town officials and principals of the town to annually file a conflict of interest paper. My concern, I just, like, off the top of my head, just put the board, elected officials, so town clerk, town treasurer, department heads, so actually Chief Rutherford would be elected official, but, you know, DuCharm, Chief DuCharm.
Right.
Jeff. Jeff. And Caroline. And what I thought, it meant, maybe what we should do is ask Caroline to check with her listserv to see who it should, what, what do the other towns do? What do they cover?
Yeah.
Does that, does that make sense to you? You know, rather than just...
My home building was designed, signed in.
Every employee?
Every employee.
Who did you, who did you vote?
Like, I'm, I was on the board of dental examiners, so I have to write that as conflict of interest in case anything ever came up. So it doesn't stop me from doing my job. It's just if anything ever came up.
Well, we'll take, you know, so what, what if we do this? I'll ask Caroline to just check in and then take a look at what I put for who, who needs to do it and see if you want to enlarge that. And then next week, what I'm hoping you do is we can come and we can, you know, see if we want to accept the policy or authorize the policy or dot, that's adopt the policy. Does that seem okay? That way this is another week to think about it and we'll get some information from Caroline. And drug-free workplace, Jody has already agreed to, yeah, find us someplace that we could just emulate. Alright, I'm at the end of our agenda. And town administration, standing items. One of them is board members' activities and updates. Michael?
I'm gonna be with you all tomorrow evening, sitting in the same position probably.
Yes.
I'm sitting in the room, we'll be in the same way.
Yes, we will be meeting at 6 o'clock with legal first.